America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Jomont McCray of the Faith Tabernacle Pentecostal Holiness Church here in Dillon, South Carolina. Pastor.
Let's look to the Lord and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for this time to gather together, Lord, and we give you praise, glory, and honor, for you are the true and living God. There is none like you and none beside you. And, Lord, we come before you as your word tells us, Lord, to acknowledge you in all our ways, so you can direct our paths. And, Lord, your word even tells us, Lord, to pray for our leaders and those in authority that we might live peaceable lives, Lord. And we pray right now that govern this particular meeting in a way, Lord, that we might give you glory, and, Lord, that lives be impacted in a positive manner, so that your name be praised, Lord, Jesus, and that we might live in harmony, in peace, in union, and to, number one, give you glory and seek your face in all things. We give you a name of praise in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. The first item is the approval of the agenda. Make the motion. Discussion?
Only thing, do I need to make a follow up thing about being recusing that cell for executive session?
You can.
Okay. I have a potential interest, and I will leave when we go into executive session. All right. Any more discussion?
And also make note there that you have submitted a written statement to the mayor to get you sort of be in the minutes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting, April the 8th, 2024. Same. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mayor's report. Well, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I want to thank everybody for giving us a little bit of their time. The city of Dillon has been a busy place since we met last in April. I want to thank Glenn and all the city employees for the huge success that Celebrate Main was. I think that every single employee in the city of Dillon was involved in Celebrate Main in some form or fashion, and the ones that worked the festival that day, I think they were out there at 5:30, 6 o'clock that morning, and I don't know what time they left that night, maybe 1 o'clock that night cleaning up. So I really want to thank everyone involved in that. It was a huge crowd, a lot of fun, and I think it was really nice, the way it was set up this year is a little different than the years past.
I rode through, I ride through that area every Sunday morning after I take that route from Starbucks over to our church. It was spotless.
They spent all night cleaning up.
Spotless.
Yeah. And they were there waiting for everyone to leave.
Yeah.
We also, a couple Fridays ago, or Friday before last, we kicked off our first Friday series for downtown. That's with the bands and performances out at the fountain. And it was a really good crowd, a great band, a good performance, and I really encourage everyone to start coming out to these first Friday events. It's a great way to spend your summer. It's a great way to build and strengthen our community. There's a lot of communities around us that don't have the funds or the know-how to put something like that together, and we do, and it's really supported by the community. And I would really encourage everyone to come out if you're not enjoying those. I also want to thank the pastors association. Pastor McCray, he was out there. The Dillon County Pastors Association put on the National Day of Prayer. That was right across the street on the courthouse steps here, the 1st of May. I think that's a great way to start a month. Along with the National Day of Prayer, a lot of stuff has been happening, a lot of economic interest, a lot of inquiries, a lot of meetings around town. But during all that, we also managed to have a little bit of fun. We opened up Splash Pad. I think it was actually May the 1st, Glenn, that we did that. Had some kids come out there. They tested out that water. It looked like everything was working good. And I want to send out a special thanks to the Schaefer Foundation for donating those shades out there. If you've ever been out there to that park, it gets really hot if you're a parent watching the kids, and those shades, Glenn, they are way nicer than I thought they were going to be. They are really nice, and it adds a lot to that. I've been spending a lot of time out at the baseball fields, and there is a lot of activity out there at the fields behind the armory, not only baseball, but also softball. If you have not been out there on a Monday night or a Thursday night, you should really go and look at the amount of participation we have out there and the amount of kids that are affected by that facility. It is unbelievable. We have people going all the way out to the armory to park. I mean, it runs out of parking places right there where the games are switching over. And while I've been out there, I've also been really excited to see those lights erected over at the soccer and the football fields. Those are going to be something really special, and send out a thanks to Coach Hayes for helping us secure the funding for those lights. It's going to be a real benefit to that facility. And also, while I've been out there, and we're talking about the football fields, I've been hearing a lot of excitement about the football program starting up back in the city here. So I think we'll eventually get a lot of kids out there, and Bobby, I think y'all are having a football camp this weekend. So anyway, I'm really excited about that. In closing, the other day, I was invited to an economic meeting out there at the port, and NESA was there, that's the Northeastern Strategic Alliance, and they tried to help us out with a lot of our economic issues and development. And I was out there with our economic developer, and we had a guy come to town that we were visiting with, and he's called Site Selector. I really don't know what Site Selectors do, but I think he was from Massachusetts, and he kind of steers industry into areas or towns or places that he would bring them to prospectively put an industry. And, you know, I've gone out there with him several times, but this guy really wanted to talk about the town, and he wanted a little presentation. And as I was sitting there, thinking about what I was going to talk to him about, I was trying to list up all the positive things and the selling points that we have here in the city of Dillon and the surrounding community. And, you know, I came up with a few and jotted some down, and then as I was talking to him, I felt like I was going on and on and on, and it's just unbelievable when you sit down and think of the amount of positive things we have in the city of Dillon, the things we have to offer from the parks, from the ball fields, from the golf courses. We're very financially stable, the wellness center. I mean, we just have a huge amount to offer. And I finished up, and the guy was really impressed, and he said, "Tell me again, how many people are in your city here?" And I told him, and he said, "You know, that is really amazing that you have all of this for municipality, your size. You have so many life-enriching projects to offer." And I say all this because I think we're all guilty sometimes that we take this stuff for granted here in the city of Dillon and in our community. Most of the time, we always pick out the one or two negative things that everybody always focuses in on, and I really just would encourage everyone to remember those positives and remember what we have, and let's be thankful for what we have. And as you're talking to people, let's be ambassadors for our community, ambassadors for our city, and let's tell people about the good things out there, because there is a lot, a lot of good, and I think it outweighs any negatives that we have. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I get invited to a lot of stuff now, and some of it is on the smaller side and some is bigger, but there are a lot of different groups that are trying to do things to improve the community, and it might not be important to you, but it's important to somebody out there. So when you see these people trying to improve our community, let's try to support them or at least give them an encouraging word. And that's all I have for tonight. Mr. Wagner?
I want to follow up with some of the comments that you made. Talking about football registration, we did last month, I told you, we were doing early registration, but we got to worship more help as it happened. And that was on April 15th, when it started. Last day to register was May the 10th, which was this past Friday. And I'll say publicly shocking, but then surprising, 88 kids.
How about that?
Last year, when we did football registration for tackle, we had two.
Wow.
At regular. So that's a good positive. We've got about 40, 44, actually 44 9- and 10-year-olds and 44 11- and 12s, which, if they stay through the program through the summer and then when we start actually practicing in August and September, we'll have two teams in each age group, and that's been a while since we've had that.
Yeah, that is.
So that's a good positive.
Who's, are you running it?
It'll go through the recreational one. Me and Kevin will kind of spearhead that.
It's huge.
It is.
It is. Is that erosion in that program has slowly gotten to the high school?
Well, you figure since COVID, which, in fact, a memory popped up on my phone today, four years ago today, we kind of started opening things back up. I, the Wellness Center, was open back up four years ago today. So since COVID, the past four years, we've taken a hit in youth athletics or youth activities, but it's starting to increase, and here it goes to show you that tackle football hasn't been doing, I think, one time since then, and that may have been in '21, if we reserve it for now. In '22, they didn't, then we tried in '23, and nothing happened. So '24 is looking promising on that side of it. June the 10th is our next regular meeting. The mayor and councilman Dave both have conflicts on that day. They've asked to, we could schedule our next regular meeting on June the 3rd, the Monday prior to the regular date. Is everybody okay with that?
I don't, I don't, when are we going to have our...
Budget thing?
That's next on my list. I've got a bunch of takes here. You're good. So June 3rd, we're okay with moving our regular council meeting on the 3rd of June?
You should be finished. Budget workshop tentatively scheduled for Thursday, May 23rd, which would be, what, a week and a half? Not this coming, it'd be Thursday week, we'll have a budget workshop at that point in time. Working on budget at Speaker Burton, Janet, or putting some numbers together for me to look at. And as we all know, money is tight this time around. I don't foresee us having our own workshops like we've had in the past, because really there's, you can't get so much from a turnip, as they say. We'll try to get some things to you to look at on the 23rd of May, and then if we need to meet again prior to June 3rd, we will. June 3rd, again, is going to be our regular council meeting. At that time, I will provide you with our first reading of our budget, and then we have 15 days to advertise for our public hearing and final reading, and final reading and public hearing for the budget is right now tentatively scheduled for June 24th. We also had dates that we talked about last month or month before, I can't remember, on the streetscape project that we were going to sit down and go over some things. Bert and I met with Steffi Mitchell with DCA after their landscape architect submitted some plans. We met with her two or three weeks ago, and what we saw, we wanted to do some little changes to, so we sat down with her, went over those changes. She submitted them back to our architect. They submitted those changes back to her. I got the changes today via email this morning, so Bert and I'll sit down and look at, make sure they put in what we were requesting to be changed, and then we'll go from there. So I'm not sure, you know, I threw out some dates back in March, I believe, that we would meet sometime in May on this. I don't foresee any meetings happening just because of budget workshop and how many of those we'll have, so we'll try to nail some of those dates down. If not, in June, sometime in July, to go over those things. And lastly, and Chief Lane can give you more information, just give you an update on the Police Department renovations. They come along, moving on pretty good, I think, at this point in time. I don't know that we actually have a good date to say that we'll be in the building, but you can go and look and see there's a lot of work being done in that building, and that's fine if it's June, July, August, September, we're okay.
Way this long.
Yeah, we're okay. So Chief, you want to give any updates on?
Not much to give. I mean, they actually aren't moving on pretty good. The painters started.
Elevator in?
Elevator won't be in until things deliver 1st of June and end of May, 1st of June, but he says that everything's going to be complete when that's delivered. So we'll see. I think I've had some difficulty talking to the elevator people and getting them down here, but there's some certain requirements for...
Didn't get an notice?
Sir?
Didn't get an notice, and they just stopped the run.
So anyway, it is, painter started, so as soon as they put primer on the walls and the sheetrock, we'll come back and go over.
That's all I have. Just, all right. Thank you. Mr. Faith?
Okay. Went back over general fund a little bit. I had left one of the grants that we got in there, the state funds. So instead of a million five, then spent more than 24, we spent $646,579. I just wanted to clear that up.
Six hundred how?
646,579.
Okay, that, we spent more in 24 than 23.
Yeah, yes. And you can look at your, Ethan, with the reports you got, you can compare the line items and see where we go to spend when you go back and forth. You can look at them. Okay, our total cash accounts, restricted and unrestricted in general fund is $2,621,506.
Down from, that's about 500,000 from last year.
And we, we'll get probably about a million in next month.
But we were in that same situation as time last year, so we're 500,000 now. Just, when we go to budget, we got to find that money.
Yes, we do.
I mean, and it's going to hurt. You know, we've just got to find that money. We can't run this thing in the ground.
No, because if you keep going that way, you will. Okay, our total revenues was $390,616 more in '24 than in '23. The grants are not included in this, and as I just told you, we spent $646,579 more in '24 than we did in '23.
Now, I know 450 of that, I know where that is, you know, there's another 200,000. Is that just inflation, unanticipated? Is this an anticipated increase? I didn't go, I didn't scrutinize the budget to see if we're 100% and we still have two more months to... Do you understand what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
I mean, who's over? Where are we looking at?
Right, you're looking at your percentage right here.
For expenditures?
Yeah, for the total, the whole total budget as a whole or just as a spending?
Well, it is, where are we hurting? I mean, is it employees? Is it insurance? Is it something that we didn't budget for?
I think it's things that we did budget for, and as I'm going through it again, looking from revenue standpoint, we've collected about what we said we'd collect.
Yeah.
Expenditure standpoint, and I'm just going to pull one out, I'll use fire. That was the first one I just looked at. Total expense just for that apartment at a percentage rate where we should be at 83% 10 months in, they're at 83.27%. You know, I'll pull another one.
Places, just generally cost of oil.
Well, your insurance, I will say this, the insurance is more, we're paying more now.
Than we anticipated.
Than we anticipated, because they give us a percentage and we went by that, and when we got our loop back, or it was more.
Our sanitation, where we should be at 83%, we had spent 95% of our budget, so right there's 12% higher than we should be.
What was that, repairs or?
Uh, yeah, motor vehicle repair. We budgeted $10,000. We spent $82,000 so far.
But now we got 44,000, 46,000 of that out of the repairs, we got that back in revenue. Reimbursed on that one.
Also bought some containers too, that would need to be replaced. But this time last year in that same department, we were at 86%. So again, we're over, but we didn't have, we had spent $37,000 this time last year for repairs, compared to $82,000. I mean, you have things like that.
I looked over it for a long time, and there was nothing that really stuck out as one item, just a little bit, it's picking everywhere, a little bit everywhere.
Well, you know, our general liability insurance went up 28,000.
Or what?
The stric...
Liability?
Liability insurance. Our street lighting, complex street lighting that we, that's what we call it, that went up 23,000.
And we didn't have that in the budget?
No.
Yeah. Oh, all right. Yep. But there is, they're looking to decrease that this coming year, if it is?
Let me say, we did budget 262,000 for that, but I was looking back at this year, same time this year, we were 22,000 more.
Yeah.
And water and sewer fund, our total, restricted and unrestricted, $4,516,850.
Why is that now?
Why?
Yeah, why is that? Why is that?
It's up.
No, it's up.
Which one?
Total restricted revenue.
That was just during that month, that time period, yes.
We were watering sewage, right?
Yeah. We had 600,000.
If you talk about unrestricted funds, we had 2.2 million last year, we got 1.79 million now. That's a damn.
Half a million dollars.
Well, I'll go ahead and tell you. I'll go ahead and tell you where to say that. We spent 499,000 on the EDA grant that we had to put up, upfront money, so we'll get that back.
Okay.
So that's your 500,000.
Still a little bit up.
I'm going to tell you that.
Yeah, okay.
And when she's talking about the EDA grant, that is the one that we're using on Highway 9 South over the river where we're taking, taking a sewer line that goes to the spray field off the old bridge under the river.
I just couldn't figure that out, you know. I can understand inflation and all that stuff, but we're pretty regular on that sewage money to be half a million dollars now. Well, that...
We had to pay it upfront. We got to pay it before we can get it back, so, and I will tell you this, the next payments that come in, I'm going to take them out of the City and Purdue depreciation account, where I can put that money back when we get it, because it's going to take probably a month or two before we'll get it back. So instead of using our cash account on U S A to go back in. Okay, we've 289,768, we brought in more in '24 than we did in '23. We spent 239,026 more in '24 than we did in '23. Golf course, our cash account, $39,747. We brought in 55,754 more in '23 than we did in '24 due to the thing that was shut down, so you really can't compare that. And we've spent 13,429 more in '23 on equipment repairs. 2% hospitality. We have a total of $1,224,422 in the account. We brought in 56,587 more in '24, and that includes interest in that account as well, so I'll let you know that. And we've spent 109,428 more in '24 than we did in '23, that's the wellness center equipment. And we have one payment left, and that'll be paid off next January.
Next January.
Just to give you a quick idea, for the month of April of this year versus the month of April of last year, we brought in about 1,500 more dollars last year during the month of April. But during that 10-month period, we brought in about 50,000 more for 10 months this time last year versus today.
2,000 more back this year.
But this month comparing to April of '23, we brought in less.
Yeah.
Seventy years.
Oh, you're talking about the month. Oh, I'm talking about the year today. Okay. Stormwater, we have 327,853 in the cash account. We brought in 1,024 more in '23 than we did in '24, and we spent 4,020 more in '24 than we did '24. This account owes general fund 240,000, and I'll take that money next month and draw it out and put it in general fund, but we are waiting to get those funds back.
I will tell you and admit that, put it in my report, I received an email last week where we had applied for a stormwater grant a year and a half ago for South First Avenue, Hampton Street, under the railroad track back to 301, that were denied because we did fall into category. They had too many people requesting, and ours was graded lower. They've got additional money that they want us to reapply. It is a 10% match. It was around $2 million when we did it a year and a half ago, so we figured the numbers would be pretty close to where they were. So, you know, that's 200,000 if we get that, that we'd have to make. So that's the reason, try to keep as much money in that account, because that's what it's there for.
Can you use, and I don't know that it addresses any I and I issues, but can you use any sewage money on the, on the stormwater?
Right.
Even if there's identified I and I issues?
Well, if you identify I and I issues where... I don't know that you could, because the I and I...
I understand the conflict, but, you know, I mean, when we did that local swamp thing, and, you know, we would, we would have, you know...
But that wasn't storm, that wasn't stormwater.
Well, well, it was stormwater, it was causing I and I.
Well, it was groundwater, because we didn't have any stormwater lines in that area. I mean, that's...
Okay.
The American Rescue ARP funds, you've got a million 592,270 in that account, and you've got your distribution on that. And I will tell you, and funds, the three percent... And I will tell you, and funds, um, the three percent A tax, LFOA tax, motel tax that we get, we're down to twenty-nine thousand in that account. And that's due to all the festivities we're having that's been coming out of there, so you're gonna have to look at it. Well, how are you gonna do the, from this point forward? You need to look at that, if, you know, maybe, I talked to Glenn about maybe two percent, you might could do some of that, but, that's the only other place you're gonna be able to get it, other than, what, state impacts and some of those.
Also, I don't know, maybe sometime we need to talk about what we're gonna do in the future.
Yeah, because, I mean, you got, you know, again, and we talked about this one time before, not too long ago. First and foremost, you know, after you pay off, I'm gonna call the mortgage note, you know, it's due in January, that will, you know, end that twenty-year note. Um, and we've got to, you know, we've got to remember, that building is not twenty years old, but close to it. There's some things that need to be done as far as HVAC units, you know, those things are, I think there's twelve, fifteen of those sitting there that need to be replaced. Whether you replace them all at one time or not, that's your choice, but, you know, that's gonna be a big hit.
Quarter million dollars.
That'd be a big hit. And I, and I think that's the first and foremost thing we should do there. Now, I think I also mentioned that I had put out a request or proposal to do a master plan on the property that we purchased a year or two ago behind it. I've got those proposals in, we'll sit down this week and go over them, if there's six or seven of them, and probably come back in our June meeting and make a request based off of what we find and what the cost will be to do a master plan there on that property, but you'll use some of that money to do that, but you'll, down the road, use some of that money to develop that property. As long as people continue to, to eat seventy thousand dollars worth a month.
That's two point, that's two percent, one point four million dollars a month, is that what it is?
To me?
Can I ask you a question on the, um, American Rescue money? The interest we're making on that?
What is the interest we're making on that?
It's a little bit over two percent.
You do weigh that in?
Four percent on that mortgage.
How we have that set up? Well, we did, uh, make twenty-three hundred in interest for the month of April.
Yeah.
Then it'll be around two, two dollar percent.
Pardon?
Be around two percent.
Thirty-six hundred.
Well, this bank's giving four percent.
And so far, we've collected almost twenty-eight thousand in ten months.
I'm getting interest at some banks different from the others. I've gone to them and asked them about, you know, including our interest rate. So, the only other thing I have to do is money, if they don't give it to me. On one account, I'm getting four point, um, five percent interest.
About ten months, five thousand a month, we're pretty good there.
I'm sorry.
All right. Ms. Moody?
So, I'll just kinda add on to what, uh, Mayor Paul said, that we, as the city and all of our employees, did an amazing job for Celebrate Main, the support that we get from our staff is just, is unbelievable, um, the maintenance, the fire, the police. If you look at the whole event, it wasn't just the city though, I mean, Johnny Lures, the Paltimer Cruisers did an amazing job in the car show. We come on down, we had about seventy, uh, vendors that were set up, the entertainment on the two stages, the Methodist men feeding us, and then the agricultural avenue, did you see those big tractors that were there? They were huge, and they're, and, uh, you know, past, or reading to the children, and, and the dance groups on the square, and the fire department at the end, and the bike race, and the whole day from five-thirty in the morning till about one o'clock in the morning, we as a community provided something pretty spectacular for our residents and, and all the surrounding communities, so we definitely should have guarded ourselves on that. It was a spectacular day. Um, right after that, we have First Friday at the Fountain, and it was, it was great, we've got a wonderful lineup. I think everybody's probably seen this by now, um, Jim Quick's coming on the seventh, yes, it's July fifth, it's the only time I can get Band of Oz, but they'll be here, not everybody goes to the beach, so who didn't, they'll probably be with us. Um, Jeb Mack, they are really cutting back on a lot of their events right now, so I'm just really glad to have them on our schedule for this year, and then we'll end it up with Silk Road in September, we did add an extra month on to this because it's such a popular event. Um, mural up, update, the, um, the last Tommy Simpson mural, um, the, the wall prep is almost complete. Um, that building has been sold, it's no longer owned by Alan Watts, and we've already communicated with the new owners of Fitzpatrick's, um, gotten permission to move forward with that wall at the Madison Building area that we tore down. So, we're hoping that the prep on that'll be finished in time, we'll start that next week. Um, it's gonna be our train mural that's gonna go on that one, so it's just gonna be a nice addition to our, our mural, um, program that we have. Um, we are having an art exhibit on the sixteenth, um, this Thursday, if anybody would like to come, the Carolina Art Guild will be, um, displaying their artwork in our visitor's center on an ongoing basis, as well as some of our muralists and some of our other local artists. Uh, Sarah Pass will have some artwork in there, and then a couple of our other local artists as well. Mixed media, um, pottery, baskets, you name it, it'll be in there on an ongoing basis, so I think it'll be added a nice, um, touch to that. We did have Jason Best, who did our mural in Lockeney Courtyard, came, and we did the, the one mural that we selected to keep in the visitor's center, so if you guys come by on the sixteenth, you can see what he did to the Greedy Creek, um, mural that we had, the resort area, so it was really nice. Um, and then the last thing, I'm pretty excited about this, it's gonna take a lot of work, but I think it's important. Um, you go to different cities like Lake City, York County, Fayetteville, they all have a large publication of what their, their county or their city has to offer. Recently had someone, um, actually Ryan Schaefer came into the visitor's center, like, well, where's the stuff for City of Dillon? And we, Ashley and I have gone through and made postcards, and we've got a little brochure, but we need something more substantial. Um, so, I'm working with the Dillon Herald, I'm coming up with, uh, we're kinda playing around with the names right now, but it'll be a fifty-page publication, um, and we'll sell the advertising, I already sold one today. Um, and it hasn't really officially started yet, but it never hurts to ask. Um, so we'll have about forty-nine ads, um, and, uh, we will name a hundred things that you can do in Dillon County, um, and it's kinda what they've done in this particular one for Lake City. So, it'll be a fun thing for people to read, also, it'll support our downtown businesses, we'll have an area for downtown, private agricultural area for the farms, and it'll just kinda pinpoint a lot of things that we can do. Meet the mayor council, you'll have your own page. Um, the hope is to, um, produce some funds for the Christmas decorations for downtown. So, although the publication cost, you know, will be a pretty high amount, we should at least make double on that for the ads that'll go in here and be able to supply that to get some new Christmas decorations. It might take a couple of years of publications to pay for the whole, um, the program that we'd like to do for downtown, but I think with three years for sure, we should have about thirty thousand dollars in profits from this to be able to put through the Christmas decorations. Um, we'll print two thousand copies, um, in five hundred increments from Dillon Herald, they'll do it with us, and we'll distribute them on the I ninety-five, um, visitor's center, as well as some of the folks that do the advertising will have there, so they will be circulating around the area. And they will be for a solid year, so when somebody subscribes, they'll do it for the year. And that's kinda where we are, since I sold my first one today.
How much is that?
The, uh, the quarter page starts at two fifty, half page goes to four, uh, full page, um, is six, and then there's the front inside for a thousand, and the two backsides are, are eight hundred apiece, we have a total of forty-nine. Um, so we'll have, we'll have sixteen quarter page, we'll have sixteen, actually twenty-one half page, we'll have twelve full pages at six hundred, and the premiums, like I said, run from one thousand eight hundred. Um, the calculations themselves for the whole project, um, are eleven thousand three hundred forty-three dollars, but we will make just a little over twenty-two thousand on it with those ads alone. Um, so we'll have about ten thousand to go in for the first round of Christmas decorations, and that'll give us some banners and, and some other parts, so. So, that's, show me the money, so I'm trying to show you the money for Christmas decorations. So, uh, if you have a business in town, I'm probably gonna be talking to you, just so you know, everybody up there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, that's a lot of work. Questions? All right, citizens' report. Anybody got anything for us? Yes, sir.
What's the latest on the car wash?
What's, what's holding that up?
You want?
Do you know what's holding it up to the car wash?
I think that, that issue's clear, I think they're.
Sewer issue?
The sewer issue that they were having is clear, but that was really on, on their side, they just wanted to negotiate. But I, I don't think there's any issue at all. It looks like a lot of electronics in there.
Is that sewers?
Or a pretty intense project.
It's like a vacuum cleaner.
Oh, is that what that is? Nothing else? All right, old business. I don't think we have any old business. New business. Resolution five twenty-four, to accept proposals of the master plan for the downtown market analysis. Do you get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Lisa, please.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You worked on this one.
All right, so we, um, received, uh, three proposals.
Let me, let me back up first, I'm sorry. We, we got a grant through the municipal association, what, six months ago?
Yes, sir.
To do the market analysis of, up to, they would pay us twenty-five thousand to do this, or they would pay twenty-five thousand to have it done. So, now we went out to request proposals and this was.
So, to date, uh, we've received three, uh, proposals for the, uh, market analysis, which is to cover, um, downtown, as well as a portion of Radford Boulevard as well. Um, of the three submissions, two of them did not include Radford Boulevard at all. Um, so on our scoring, that actually was a strike against them on that particular, um, scale. And then one did include it, um, the total budget for benchmark was thirty-five thousand dollars. It did not include Radford Boulevard, nor did include the, the pro formas that we had asked for. Um, and there were some grammaticals and some other parts that were kind of wrong with the, with the presentation. Um, retail strategies provided one that, also, uh, the total market analysis with an implementation support was forty thou- forty-five thousand. And, um, and then the third one was with Rose Associates in conjunction with the Develop South Carolina. Um, that budget is broken down a little differently, but it came to thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars. It does include Radford Boulevard and the information that we had requested for that. Um, so we'll get the work, um, needed for downtown, so we can go after, um, possible developers and, uh, folks that will invest downtown, as well as the work that we'd like to be on, be doing on Radford Boulevard as well, hotel. What kind of restaurants could we try to entice to come downtown? Um, the one for Rose and Associates does give some obstacle work after the thirty-five thousand two hundred, which is everything that we asked for, um, and, and is some for housing needs assessment and quality of life scoreboards, economic development strategies, and some marketing plans and developing of a marketing package, so they're offering us a lot more in the long run, um, that could be above and beyond what we actually asked for. Um, so with the scoring that we, we did, uh, we are proposing that the third proposal with Rose and Associates be selected um, based on what information that they gave us.
We can take that out of the hospitality.
They came highly recommended, and their plan, they, they seem to know what they were, they weren't just going.
I'm a little overwhelmed with that one, but, uh, just on the last thing, I mean, I felt like they, they took the money and gave us a little scribble and,
I was really surprised that Radford Boulevard, because it was asked specifically to include that, was not included in those two, but even with the scoring, um, Rose Associates is, is the selection.
Well, I'm, I'm really excited because she seemed very energetic, and they want to encompass the entire area.
I think it'll be a long-term relationship with that.
You need a motion on that?
Yes.
We need, we did, we did the motions in second discussion. Any more discussion?
This is to approve.
Yeah. To accept.
To accept, um, Rose Associates at thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars.
All right, more discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. Thank you, Lisa. Resolution six twenty-four, addendum to employer resolution for participation in the state insurance benefit program regarding county municipality council member coverage. Do I have a motion? I don't agree with that. Make a motion, yeah. Second? All right, discussion? All right.
Now, the motion would be that we're considered active employees.
That is correct.
Yes.
That is correct. So, should've been with this, uh, resolution, a letter telling you, is that not a fact?
Yes.
All right. Somewhere the, the General Assembly has decided to change some things when it comes to the South Carolina PIBA health insurance. And that is making council members employees for the purpose of having insurance, like, I mean, health insurance. So, you have this one-time deal to say, yes, we want to continue on the health insurance program as council members, or you can say, no, we do not want to continue on this health insurance for council members. Once that one-time deal is done, it cannot be changed. Whichever way you go, it, it cannot be changed.
And that's not individually, that's just as a whole?
That is correct. That is correct. So, if y'all, if you voted tonight to, to not be considered active employees of the employer for the purpose of participating in the state insurance benefit program, as of tomorrow, if those that are on our insurance would come off of our insurance and you can never get back on as a council member. If you decide to say, yes, we want to be considered as active employees for the purpose of, we'll just keep doing what we've been doing. That make sense? So, we're, the motion is that we will accept being your employee. Members of council will be. Boss. I've had a boss in a long time. That's not what that says. Members of council will be considered active employees of the employer for the purposes of participating in the state insurance benefit program. Motion is made.
Second.
So, all in favor?
See, I'm coming off tomorrow, right?
We sign, we have to sign.
Tina, you got the original, don't you? Yes, you'll sign it before we leave tonight.
Resolution seven twenty-four, the fair housing resolution, do I have a motion? Is that?
What is that about? This is something that should've been done in April. Um, just a, an annual thing for fair housing that the COG and HUD requires for us when we get CDBG grants, things of that nature. We have to recognize fair housing.
I made a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion?
And that's for this month?
Yeah, it was for the month of April.
Correct, so every April from now on?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Coordinates twenty-four oh eight, amend City of Dillon official zoning map for Arthur Tompkins Jr., property tax map fifty-nine dash fourteen dash fourteen dash double oh seven, from B two highway commercial district to B one central business district, first reading, do I have a motion?
I make the motion, go from B two to B one.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Coordinates twenty-four oh eight, amend City of Dillon official zoning map for Arthur Tompkins Jr. for property tax map system number fifty-nine fourteen fourteen double oh four, from. oh four, from B two highway to B one central business district, first reading, do I have a motion?
I make motion from B two to B one.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? All right, council members report. Councilman Davy, you want to start us off?
Like you, I'm gonna reiterate some things you said again, and I'm very impressed with the things that are going on in the city. And I think we ride at love, and it seems like a lot more activities I don't have in the past. I'm really happy with the football program, I think that'll be really good for our community, and it's for a C program going forward, and the whole football program. I'm hoping we can do a few more things with the wellness center, maybe with the walking map, I know we discussed that before, a lot of people go out there and walk, but then you would go look in and see maybe that there were some options we could have, this walking area.
Inside the building?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, we've looked at some things there, but the issue is cost, because what we would want to put on the existing floor, transitions from one location to another's gonna be an issue. So, you would, you may, may would have to kinda get, I mean, you would have to do some, some work with the concrete, because that's a concrete slab, and I just don't know if it's something that we really wanna get into.
You're saying if it's more cushioned, it'll catch your foot?
Well, no, it's not that it catch your foot. Transition from, from doors, different locations, you know, because you would have to, you'd have to consider, and, and I'll use a good example that you may or may not know, and I don't want it still this way, the gymnasium at the Christian school, there, there's a transition, or used to be a problem of transition from the, was you walked into the gymnasium-
To the floor.
To the actual basketball court, I mean, you, you had that, and that's what this would be, a transitional problem, walking in the front doors to the new surface, because you, you're gonna have some sort of width there, okay?
It's an opportunity, I'd, I'd love to soon, you know, in your time, but I, you know, if we had a, a raised walking loop over our Olympic-sized swimming pool and two or three pickleball courts, that'd be pretty amazing, you know?
That was my next thing I was gonna say, I've had a lot of calls in pickleball.
Uh, we, we-
I think it means a lot.
Pickleball is getting to be very big here, you can go any morning to the wellness center, and whether we've got one or two courts going, there's some opportunities to do an outdoor court possibly with the high school, use some of those tennis courts to, to transition to pickleball, that I've had some conversations with six months ago, so there's some opportunities there as well.
Now, all our projects at the parks, they're completely gray.
Everything's completely playgrounds, yes. Of this, the phase that we just did, yes.
Yeah, Eighth Avenue, it's very impressive. The type of seating that we put out at the wellness center, or the water area, do you think we might could get something, something like that at Eighth Avenue? A covered area?
Yeah, you, you could, and then I put in a request through some earmarks for some neighborhood playground, seat covered. If, if we get the funds, that's where it would come from. And just to let you know what we just did, and, and again, thanks to the Shake Foundation, what we did, seven, they were about sixty-five hundred dollars apiece, I mean, it's not a lot of money, when you think about it, but-
I think that's something we need to probably invest in the future.
But those, those, you know, those, most of those have trees and, and sunshade, you know, middle of the day, sun's above you, so it's gonna shoot down on top of you, but late afternoon, it's pretty much blocked.
Even though it rained this past weekend, I rode by there.
Oh, it's always busy.
It is.
It is busy.
There's a lot of people sitting around in the sunshine, I just thought it'd be nice.
Vitamin D.
Yeah, that's a good, good one. That's all I got, I appreciate it.
Councilman Washington?
I'm gonna think of, see, or, I don't know. I think, I think Councilman Washington wants to thank everyone for the, for reaching out, and his family had, his mother passed, and he wants to thank everyone for all their thoughts and prayers and everything that, that they did to help.
Prayers away. Amen. Councilman Washington?
Um, I, I reached out about a very large dump truck being parked in the city. Have I got any, what's going on?
Made contact, we, we just don't have an ordinance against it, and I tried to get him to-
What was that ordinance we?
That was for semi trucks.
Well, this is a semi truck with a dump truck on the back of it. Well, I think that we need to, I mean, it is not right. You see, I mean, he is parking along this ninety-three-year-old woman's, you know, right on the property line, you know, she doesn't have a lot more years.
We can, we can change the ordinance, I guess, and-
Well, we need to, we need to look at that, it's just not right, I mean, that, today, I, I, I just happened to follow him to the parking place, and it was like, oh, you know, you can come by, and I went, you know, it was just like in your face, but, you know, you put a, a dump truck at every house, and, you know, it's just, it's just not right, you know, I, I don't know what the deal is, but we can't have that.
Benny, I thought we did that thing for buses and semis, and it was done by accident, then we do it by-
The construction part of it, which dump truck-
Well, there's a-
They failed, to lack of money.
Really?
Yeah, that was several years ago.
But we did the thing for the bus and the semis.
Yes, yeah, we did.
Yeah, it'd be fifteen feet off of the property line.
Whatever your setbacks were for each one's own.
Go back and just add that.
We can come back-
Into the same category.
It will go, it will go to planning and zoning at first.
I mean, if I still like, if someone's got the room, and they can keep it off the right of way and off, you know, back, set back.
Basically, set back.
You know, you won't work with them, especially if it's survival.
But at the same time, I can, I can totally understand, if it's on the right, go right on the right of way, I think we ought to look at going and doing pretty much what we've done with Eric Dunne's.
No, because you know that dump truck sitting next to your eyes?
No, no, no.
Okay. Who's gonna, who's gonna protect those people when that happens?
Right.
You know, that's not it.
Benny, you think you can get that on their stuff from next time?
Yes, sir.
When you owe me that?
I can schedule a meeting.
Their next one would be June the third, is that what you got?
Tomorrow.
That's the bar, so we'll do the third.
We'll have to schedule that one.
All for this?
All right. Right. Councilman Jackson, Councilman Cal-
We were checking on blocking some of those parks off, so they won't park on the, on the courts and everywhere.
Yeah, we're gonna do that kinda like what we did at the wellness center, if you come down and drive, you put up chains and posts, that's what we'll end up doing. Because I know if someone back here, they ain't driving everywhere.
They go back there, way back there.
I think there are more cars than people out there one day.
All right. We're gonna break the chain down in this place.
Well, they will, they will.
That means that, are we gonna put new signs up?
All right, thank you. All right, so now, we've come to the end of the meeting, what we'll do is we'll have a closing prayer by Mr. Benny, if he would, and then we'll get some motions to run into executive session for contractual matter, and then when we come out, we may, we may vote before we close. So, with that, Mr. Benny would close this hour.
Our Father, which art in heaven, dear Lord God, we thank you for your wisdom and guidance extended it to us on this meeting of tonight, rest that you continue to bless our mayor, city council, city manager, and city attorney, all the department heads on tonight, as we continuously gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon, and everything we do, we pray we kept to give your name the glory, the honor, and the praise, was in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, do I have a motion?